I will call this meeting to order. Thank you for attending tonight's special board meeting for staff and student recognition and awards. I will now call the special meeting to order. We have a staff member that will be taking pictures of the staff and student awardees during the recognition. It would, if you would like pictures for this evening's event, email to you. Please fill out the yellow form located on the table in the theater lobby. Please leave your completed form in the basket on the table. We do have a quorum. And now we'll introduce interpreter. Linguistic interpreting and translation will serve as the Spanish interpreter for tonight's meeting. Meeting attendings who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the meeting, please pick up your headphones at the table located at the theater lobby. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Linguistic interpreting and translation servida como intérprete al español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación en español y ir por los audífonos a la mesa ubicada en el pasillo del teatro a la entrada.
The meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Tonight, the pledge of allegiance will be led by Randy Vegas, board member Randy Vegas. Tonight, we have a big event and tonight we're actually going to be recognizing our employees of the year. So with that, our interim superintendent Doug Cardoza will provide the welcome and overview.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Guerrero, board members, students, staff, and parents. My name's Doug Cardoza. I'm honored to serve as the interim superintendent for VISA Unified. Tonight is a special night. We are here to recognize employees of the year, student board members, and to present student achievement awards to students from across our district. First, we will begin by recognizing our VUSD employees of the year, followed by board president Guerrero recognizing our student board members, and followed by our student achievement awards and recognitions, which we presented by our school site principals. So let's get started. Each year, VISA Unified School District invites district staff to submit nominations for the VUSD Employee of the Year Awards. From those nominated, district administration utilizes an objective process to identify one school employee of the year, one administrator of the year, and an outstanding teacher of the year from each level, elementary, middle, and high school. Each year, if I say unified, excuse me, the VISA Unified Employee of the Year Awards have been longstanding tradition in our school district and have always been a great way for us to highlight our incredible staff. Tonight, as a proud interim superintendent of VISA Unified, I have the honor of introducing to you our 2022 VUSD employees of the year. We begin our 2020, we begin with our 2022 School Employee of the Year, Mary Ward. Mary, if you want to join me up here. Mary Ward is a router and bus driver for VUSD's Transportation Department and has served students for our district for 28 years, 17 of which have been spent serving as a driver for special education students. Mary started working in her transportation department, offices a clerk, bus driver, then promoted to a router in November of 2020. Mary's supervisor and nominator said, "Mary is very professional and has a great attitude toward her job. She is eager and willing to assist her coworkers and other staff to ensure the smooth operation of the transportation office. Her professional work ethic and dedication to her job inspires everyone who has the privilege of working with her." Additionally, Mary truly cares for the students she serves and constantly pushes herself to come up with innovative ways to ensure that they have a successful experience on her route. We are pleased and honored to introduce Mary Ward as VISA Unified School District's Classified Employee of the Year.
I just want to say thank you to the interim superintendent, Ms. Cardoza, and the board members and the audience. And I'm honored and grateful for the vote. Thanks.
Next, we have our elementary school teacher of the year, Veronica Arbizo. Veronica is a kindergarten teacher at Ivanhoe Elementary School, where she's been supporting both students and staff of Ivanhoe School for over 20 years. She is a professional learning community, or PLC, lead for her grade level, and has been paired with new teachers as a mentor teacher. Veronica has also been involved in countless school activities throughout the school years that have supported the school and community partnerships. Veronica's supervisor and nominator says, "All staff would agree with the simple statement that Ms. Veronica Arbizo models herself as she would want all of her students to uphold themselves. Her character is without question one that we would all want staff members to exhibit each and every day. Veronica is honest, selfless, respectful, and a quiet leader that impacts the entire school community." We are pleased and honored to introduce Veronica Arbizo as VISA Unified School District's Elementary Teacher of the Year.
I would just like to say thank you. I'm so honored to have been chosen this year. This is a really special day for me and one that I won't forget, especially since it's my twin daughter's 16th birthday also. So happy birthday, girls. So thank you so much.
Next, we have our middle school teacher of the year, Paige Williams. Those middle schoolers, you gotta watch those middle schoolers. Paige Williams has been a science teacher at Green Acres Middle School for 10 years. Mrs. Williams is a longtime positive presence at Green Acres and in VISA Unified School District. She tirelessly supports the continued learning of her students and has been instrumental in supporting VUSD's shift to an integrated science model for grades six through eight. Paige's supervisor and nominator said, "Paige is Green Acres Science Department lead and has been a middle school science teacher in VUSD for 10 years. But what makes her special is her dedication to students. Paige is an asset to the community of VISA, the place where she was born and raised and has lived her entire life. She is now a servant leader at Green Acres, the school she attended and helped her grow during her own middle school years. Paige gives back to the community that gave her so much during her years as a young Visalian, and we are proud of her and her accomplishments. We are pleased and honored to introduce Paige Williams as a VISA Unified School District's Middle School Teacher of the Year."
I noticed you pulled the microphone down for me. Thank you. Good evening, board members, interim superintendent Cardoza, and members of the audience. My name is Paige Williams. Being recognized as VUSD Middle School Teacher of the Year is an honor. I am impressed and inspired by the teachers, the administrators, and the faculty that do good and important work all around me all the time. And I know many, many individuals deserving of this award. I would like to thank my colleagues and administration at Green Acres Middle School, or as we say, the Green Acres Middle School, for noticing and appreciating my work and to my family for their support and understanding of my commitment. If you're not a teacher, but you're married to a teacher, you'll understand that sentiment. Teaching is a truly dynamic job. Days are full of variety and energy, challenges to meet, and connections to make. My personal promise to my students is to bring them my best. The focus is growth and learning and adapting to meet their needs. It is a privilege to be a member of the educational community. Our profession is one of optimism and love for our students. We each have such a special opportunity to teach, empower, and be a positive force for good in the lives of our students. Thank you again for this recognition.
Next, our high school teacher of the year is Tom Fox. Tom has served VISA Unified since 2015, and he is currently an English teacher at El Diamante High School. Additionally, Tom teaches classes for two academies that are hosted at El Diamante, the sports therapy rehabilitation orthopedics and neuromuscular gains for strong academy, as well as the media arts academy. Tom is extremely creative and works with his professional learning community team to implement engaging lessons, and his talent is recognized both at the site and district level. Tom's supervisor and nominator stated, "Tom provides a positive learning environment in his classroom. He builds relationships with his students so they feel safe to interact with him and one another. Tom is a man of moral character and strength, and he is a positive presence on our school campus. Please join me in congratulating our VISA Unified High School Teacher of the Year, Tom Fox."
I thank you so much, interim superintendent, board members, for this honor. I find it difficult to be singled out for recognition in a year when so many educators have worked so very hard in the face of so many challenges. But I'd feel better if I could accept this on behalf of the entire staff at El Diamante. I don't work in a vacuum. I'm a part of an awesome team. And I think all of them, every teacher, every office and support staff member, every admin up to our awesome principal, Kim Nelson, I think they're all worthy of recognition. We rise together, and as you honor me, you honor all of us. So I thank you for that gift to my minor family. My own family as well. Thank you to my wife, Rochelle. Thanks, honey. I love you. My three kids, Dylan, Molly, and Toby. I work with teenagers all day, so I know a good kid when I see one, and I got three good ones. Thank you to my stepdad, Steve, who's here, as well as all my family and colleagues. My biggest thanks, I think, needs to go to my mother, Becky. She was my cheerleader. When I decided to change careers and become a teacher, I wasn't prepared for how exhausting and difficult it would be. It was challenging. And I wasn't feeling very successful at first, but she was my cheerleader. And she said, "Son, I just know that one day you're going to be Teacher of the Year." And I know moms are supposed to say that, but I said, "I disagree, mom. That's nice, but I don't think that's going to happen. Sorry." But here we are, so don't argue with your mother. She's the first one I wanted to call. And a couple of weeks before I found out, I lost her to cancer. But I know that if she were here tonight, she would just be beaming with pride, as she always was. And she'd be happy to know that she was right in this case. So I know she's with me in spirit, and I'd like to just, if I could dedicate this to my mom and say, "Mom, thank you so much for your love and encouragement and support every time I needed it." So thank you so much, and thank you all.
And our final staff recognition award this evening goes to our Administrator of the Year, Lisa Majarian. I think those elementary teachers given the middle school teachers run for their money. Lisa Majarian has faithfully served the community of VISA Unified for almost 33 years, with the most recent seven as principal of Royal Oaks Elementary School. During that time, Lisa put a tremendous amount of time and care into creating a safe, efficient, and effective environment for both students and staff at Royal Oaks. This year, Lisa has shown exceptional leadership in managing two elementary education programs. She currently leads an in-person campus with approximately 460 students and a virtual program with 480 students. This is a daunting task, but she has taken it on with the utmost professionalism and grace. At Royal Oaks, the staff member said, "Lisa has shined in the area of implementing visions and goals for Royal Oaks, especially when considering the building of a new program and determining the goals for that program. She has graciously accepted the responsibility and always holds the interest of students and families at the forefront of our work." Another staff member stated, "It is a privilege to learn from Lisa and her leadership and inspiration. We are pleased and honored to introduce Lisa Majarian as VISA Unified Administrator of the Year."
So, good evening, board members, interim superintendent Mr. Cardoza, and members of the audience. I'm honored to accept this award as Administrator of the Year. I want to thank you for this recognition, and I really, at this point, would like to thank a few people who I truly believe had gotten me to this point. First off, I'd like to take, thank a longtime employee of VISA Unified, but the person who really has instilled in me at a young age the importance of hard work and of setting goals, and that's my mom, Carol Costello. Without her, I wouldn't be here. I'd also like to thank my husband, Paul, for all of his support, and my three children, who are young adults, and who I'm proud to say are proud products of VISA Unified. So Ryan, Rebecca, and Rachel, thank you for all you do for me. Last, I also would like to say, see, I'm nervous and I don't want, um, you know, we don't get to this point by ourselves. 33 years in VISA Unified, 25 years in a classroom. I'm here because of those mentors that pushed me to be my very best and those from the district office down to parents and everyone else that pushed me to do my best and supported me in everything I did. And I'm fortunate to have had amazing mentors in VISA Unified. But I'd also like to thank the staff of Royal Oaks. We have been through a tremendous amount of changes over the last two years, especially this last year. We doubled our staff, we doubled our enrollment, and you still stick by me, knowing that each day we just get stronger and we're stronger than ever. Special thanks to Denise Crabtree, my assistant principal, because without her, I don't know I could face each day this year. And lastly, the reason I'm here today is thankful for all those students, my current students and former students, because they really are the reason that I go to work every day. They really are what drives me to be the best I can as an administrator that goes down to our teachers, that in turn goes down to our students. They are a product of what we do every day, and they will forever hold a place in my heart over 33 years. So thank you, VISA Unified, for this honor. I'm lucky to work for you.
Again, let's give them a round of applause, and thank you for your service. Much appreciated. So this time, we're going to bring up our student board representatives, and you can take those seats right over there.
Thank you once again to our employees. I think they're a reflection of all our employees here at VISA Unified. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on with our agenda. Our next item on the agenda is enclosure number two, student achievement awards and recognition. And we have four students that come from ASB, and they all take turns on our school board during the year. The students are, and I'll call them one by one, and we're going to do the same thing in terms of the way we did it with our teachers, our staff. The first person I'm going to call up is Preston Boswell. He comes out of El Diamante High School. The next person I'm going to call up is Gabby Campos. She comes out of Mount Whitney High School. Okay, we'll move on. Our, the next student that will come up is Mireia Velazquez, Golden West High School. Good. Our next student is Braille Alvarez. She comes out of Redwood High School. Before the students leave, I do want to say this, that the board does appreciate our students coming to our board meeting. They don't just come and sit there. We do have a student vote. They do vote, and they do go through the agenda. They study the agenda, and they're involved in all the enclosures except those that are from closed session. The board does appreciate having our students there. It's important for us for them to be there because that connects us to our students, but it's also part of the student voice in our school campuses. And I thank you very much, very much on behalf of the school board. Thank you very much. We're going to move on with our agenda, and we're going to move on to our students, student achievement awards, and that I'll call up Alma Navarro and Mr. Roberto Vaca, student recognition and awards.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero, board members, and interim superintendent Doug Cardoza. I'm Alma Navarro, and I'm an area administrator. Tonight, we have the pleasure of recognizing outstanding high school students in the areas of language development, growth, business education, mathematics, physical education, science, and educational options, overall academic achievement. The board will also recognize the United Student Association of Visalia or USAB, spring student of the season. USAB consists of VISA Unified School District secondary students. dedicated to improving the educational programs and representing student views to the Board of Education. These students represent the best of the best from our schools in the areas for which they have been selected, and we are very proud of them for their accomplishments and for how they represent their schools and our district. Each of them is certainly worthy of this special recognition tonight. But before we begin, I would like to first recognize and thank the parents and families of each of these outstanding students. Your support and encouragement is valued and appreciated. I would also like to recognize and thank their teachers and school staff who have supported their learning and successes. All of us share pride in the accomplishments of these students. We are very happy to be able to take time tonight to honor these students and hear about their accomplishments. Students, you will receive a medal as part of your, your recognition, which you are invited to wear at your commencement ceremony. Also, photos of tonight's awards presentation will be available. Please print your name and email address clearly on the yellow form located in the lobby. At this time, I would like to call up Mr. Bill Davis, Principal of Vicelia Technical Early College, to get us started.
Good evening. Yeah, stay over there. Okay, all right. Just want to make sure. You're so far away. All right. All right. Good evening, President Guerrero. Come closer. I don't have my glasses on, so, all right, try that again. Good evening, President Guerrero, members of the board, and interim superintendent Cardoza. My name is Bill Davis, and I serve as principal of Vicelia Technical Early College High School. And I am pleased to recognize students for overall achievement and USAB student of the season. First off, we're going to start with outstanding academic achievement, and we're going to start with ladies first. VTEC is pleased to recognize Serena Bracy for outstanding academic achievement. Serena is a senior at VTEC High School. She is the niece of Jennifer and David Dowdell. Serena is, has a main, maintains a college weighted GPA of four point zero three, three. And in addition to everything she does at school, she also has completed twenty-four units at College of Sequoias. After high school, she plans to attend Chico State and major in ag education. Serena wants to be an ag teacher. It's a good thing to be. Serena has been a key member of many organizations at VTEC, including FFA, CSF, and Key Club. She is currently the chapter FFA secretary and CSF president. Her activities include public speaking, opening and closing, impromptu speaking, horse judging, and citrus judging. VTEC is pleased to recognize Serena Bracy for outstanding academic achievement. Next, VTEC is pleased to recognize Logan Lynn for outstanding academic achievement. Got a fan club. All right, Logan is a junior at VTEC High School, and he is the son of Amber Lynn. Logan is graduating a year early with a college-weighted GPA of four point one six. So far, he's completed twenty-six units at College of Sequoias. After high school, he will be attending COS, majoring in computer engineering, and then transferring to Fresno State to major in the same program. His career goal is to become a computer programmer, and he explained a lot of other things that I didn't understand it. During his time at VTEC, Logan has been involved in FFA and CSF. He's been a huge help on our VTEC campus. We're small, so we need all the volunteers we can get, and he helps every day in our cafeteria with our lunches and breaks. VTEC is proud to recognize Logan Lynn for outstanding academic achievement. VTEC is proud to recognize Alina Martinez, our female USAB student of the season. Alina is a junior at VTEC High School, and she's the daughter of Lucina and Francisco Martinez. She currently has a GPA of three point one six. After high school, Alina would like to become a physical therapist. Mrs. Van Aken, or Ms. Van Aken, sorry, Alina's leadership advisor states, Alina has made such a huge difference in ASB. She came in as a quiet and behind-the-scenes member, but has turned into one of our most spirited leaders. She not only helps with recruiting new members, putting on events, and planning activities, but now she even leads them. She's had a positive impact on the culture and in the ASB class. VTEC is excited to recognize Alina Martinez as the female USAB student of the season. Last but not least, VTEC is extremely proud to recognize Ian Iskandarian as our male USAB student of the season. Ian is a sophomore at VTEC and is the son of Julie and Ryan Iskandarian. Ian has a three point six four GPA and plans on becoming an estatologist. Did I say it right? Close enough? Okay. He would like to attend UCLA after high school, and he is involved in FFA and leadership. Ms. Van Aken, Ian's leadership teacher, states Ian came into ASB as a sophomore and quickly became a strong leader. He has brought so much creativity and outside, think, out-of-the-box thinking to the class. Ian is full of great ideas on, on how to make all students feel welcome. Because VTEC is excited to recognize Ian Iskandarian as our male USAB student of the season. Congratulations, Ian.
Up next, we have Mr. Reyes from Sequoia High School.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Guerrero, interim superintendent, Mr. Cardoza, and board members. I am Adolfo Reyes, a proud principal of Sequoia High School, where we believe the promise of a fresh start through the restoration of our students. For our student, I know a little shy, but Marisa Sanchez is a senior who graduated ahead of schedule. She is the second person in her family of seven to earn a high school diploma. But being one of the eldest of a large family has taught her to be responsible and mature at a young age. But she takes much pride in being a role model that inspires many students, especially upholding the three Rs of Sequoia, which is responsibility. Marisa owes her success and strength to her mom. Her mom did not graduate high school because she became a young parent. Marisa's mom earned a GED while taking care of children and going to every school event and not missing a single one. She provided roof and food, but most of all, she earned, she is now a full-time correction officer and never gave up on her dream of getting her diploma as well. Marisa came to school, high school behind in credit, but she soon worked hard to not only graduate ahead of schedule, she enrolled in COS, completed her FASFA, and will be going to college. Marisa states that Sequoia is an amazing place that gives you a lot of support and makes you reach your goals, even if they got to hunt you down, track you down wherever you're at, to make sure you get your stuff done. She owes a lot to her counselor, Mrs. Cobarubios, otherwise known as Miss C. She wants to thank her. Folks, I'm super, super proud of Miss Sanchez and her accomplishments for being Sequoia Strong. Thank you very much. When Samuel was at his former school, he had all F grades, sorry to put that in public, and did not care about anything, even less school. But when COVID hit, and he was not attending school, he realized that school was much more important. Samuel realized that he would, things would be much worse if we did not have an education system. We would not have doctors or nurses to save our lives. Coming to Sequoia gave him the promise of a fresh start and the opportunity to restore. Samuel became laser-focused on his classes, cut all the bad habits, and got a part-time job at In-N-Out Burger, but you didn't invite me yet. So hopefully he'll take me one day there. He said he was super proud of his confidence in his first job interview and very successful at that. In school, Samuel has earned above a three point five GPA pretty much, and always earning the maximum amount of credits or above. He is also part of ASB program, and we recently held a very successful career fair at our school. COVID changed Samuel's life in some big ways. It gave him the empowerment to refocus on school, but COVID also took his grandfather and his cousin. These were life-changing events, but Samuel would not give up. And to honor his family, he will help change the world, starting with this major award tonight. Thank you. So I have two not with us, but I'd like to honor them as well. Andres Barajas, eleventh grader, stated that he realized life was no joke, and school cannot be treated as a joke either. Andres made a commitment that he would no longer make his mom cry every time he saw his report card. Ever since she saw his report card. Andres stated that by changing his mindset and creating a positive attitude of success, Andres turned mom's sadness into tears of joy with his new report card grades of a four point oh GPA. Now, this makes me cry as well, because to see where he came from to now, amazing, amazing story. Andres is now on target to graduate by December of this year. Andres wants a career in technology, such as coding and gaming. His counselor indicates that he is very talented and fascinated with computers. Andres, when you become the next Bill Gates, I'll tell you how to spell Sequoia for that big check. We're going to make some money here. Folks, it gives me great pride to present Andres Barajas. Sorry he could not be here. One of my other gems, Xavier Ramirez. In the past year, things got loud, pandemic loud, politically loud, trying to survive loud, and figure out how we would teach in our classrooms very loud. But when you have a student like Andre, like Xavier Ramirez, he brought the power of humbleness, patience, respect, and honor that brought calmness and wisdom to Sequoia High School. With this, with this calmness of this, Xavier stopped the loud noise and found academic success to graduate ahead of schedule and to carve a path with a career in construction. Javier, I want to thank you for empowering Sequoia through the most powerful tool that you can provide is the power of calmness, and that is what gives us the honor to honor you tonight, Xavier Ramirez.
And up next, we have Vicelia Adult School. Unfortunately, Mrs. Olson cannot be with us tonight, but I would like to read the students who will be recognized at her site. For the overall achievement, we have Gillian Yu. Let's give him a round of applause. And for the overall achievement, we have Israel Awaji. Let's give him a hand, please. I will now invite Mrs. Reed from Vicelia Charter Independent Study to come up and recognize her students.
All right. Good evening, Board members, President Guerrero, and interim superintendent Cardoza. My name is Michelle Reed, and I serve as the principal of Vicelia Charter Independent Study. I am proud to present VCIS's student overall achievement award to Anaya Robinson and Israel Awaji. I'm going to ask Anaya to step forward first. Anaya is represented tonight by her parents, Arvin and Rashay Robinson, and by her supervising teacher, Mr. Louis Moda. Mr. Moda states, what a pleasure it has been to have Anaya Robinson as a student. From the moment you meet Anaya, one could tell that she is a wonderful young woman. Her spirit is so sweet, and when you talk to her, you know that she's giving you her undivided attention. Not only is she a great person, but she is a pretty amazing student as well. She's ranked seventh overall in her senior class with a three point six nine GPA and is looking to improve that accomplishment. She is currently in the medical assistant program here at VCIS, and her instructors have only glowing reviews to share about her. Anaya plans on attending COS this upcoming fall semester and then transfer to a state or university to continue her education in the medical field. There is no doubt that she will continue flourishing in any educational setting and will serve her community proudly. It is with great pleasure that I present this overall achievement award to Anaya Robinson. Okay, next student I would like to present is Israel Awaji. Israel, could you step forward, please? Israel is represented tonight by her parents, Anwar Awaji and Sokara Alshuga, and her supervising teacher couldn't be here, but is here in spirit, Deanna Thompson. Mrs. Thompson states, Israel is an exceptional student who consistently comes to school with a positive attitude and a beautiful smile. She is driven, hardworking, motivated, and strives for nothing less than her very best at all times. Israel excels in all subject areas. It is also taking COS courses and an online Arabic course in addition to her high school courses. Israel comes to all of her meetings with thoughtful comments and thought-provoking questions. Her future goal is to pursue a career in law. She hopes to be able to make a difference by helping to provide more thorough justice and representation to those who come through the court system. After graduation, Israel plans on finishing her AA degree at COS and then transfer to Fresno State for her bachelor's degree. It is with great pleasure that I present this overall achievement award to Israel Awaji.
Big, big round of applause. Congratulations, VCIS. Up next, we have Mr. Matt Shin from Redwood High School. Round of applause for him and for the students.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero, members of the school board, and interim superintendent Cardoza. My name is Matt Shin, and I'm the proud principal of Redwood High School. I'm here tonight to present Redwood High School's students for school board recognition. First up is Nahir Karimi, who is Redwood High School's business department's outstanding student. Please step forward, Nahir. Nahir is supported tonight by his parents, Salima and Nazar Karimi. Nahir was nominated by his business teacher. Nahir was nominated by his business teacher, Mr. Abela, and selected by the entire Business Department. Mr. Abela had this to say about Nahir. Nahir is a committed, hardworking, and motivated student who has dedicated countless hours to his school and community over the past four years. During his time as a Ranger, Nahir has been a student who strives to achieve greatness while giving all that he has to help those around him. As the elected chapter president for the Redwood Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA Chapter, he has led one of the largest campus groups to four straight Valley titles during his career. He embodies what it means to be a Redwood Ranger, a person who values tradition and is loyal, hardworking, and caring. His business teacher also said, "Nahir is a great leader, someone who has been an integral part of our business program and FBLA chapter at Redwood, and he continued to make Redwood FBLA an elite chapter in both the section and state, and he's excited to see the great things that Nahir does in the future." Nahir has also excelled in his other academic classes he has taken, as he has taken numerous honors AP and college courses throughout his high school, and he's currently ranked 12th in his class of 550 students and has a 4.37 weighted GPA. After graduating from Redwood High School, Nahir plans to attend UC San Diego, majoring in business economics with the goal of becoming a financial analyst for professional athletes. I'm very proud and honored to present to you Nahir Karimi. Our next student is Salvador Ambreeze Torres, who has been recognized for outstanding student achievement in language development. Salvador is supported tonight by his mom, Lucretia Torres. Salvador was nominated by his English teacher, Mrs. Gonzalez, who wrote the following. Salvador is an amazing young man. He came to Visalia from Mexico four years ago, speaking very little English. At first, he felt overwhelmed at Redwood, but was determined to learn English and be successful in all of his classes. Now, a junior, he finally feels confident speaking and reading in English. He recently completed his first season of JV soccer and credits his teammates and coaches for teaching him more English. Next school year, he will proudly be the first person in his family to graduate from high school. After high school, he wishes to join the Marines, and his dream is to become a high school PE teacher and coach soccer at Redwood. The possibilities are endless for this true Ranger. I am very proud and honored to present to you Salvador Ambreeze Torres. Our next student is Christopher, or CJ, known as CJ Shin, and he's Redwood High School's Physical Education Department's outstanding student. Please step forward, CJ. CJ is supported tonight by his parents, Kim and Matt Shin. CJ was nominated by physical education teachers, Mr. Watts and Mr. Robuck, and was selected by the entire PE department, who had this to say about him. CJ displays amazing traits of sportsmanship and leadership in class and has taken upon himself to share his knowledge of athletics and weight training with the younger class members. His impact on our physical education program is invaluable, and his exemplary character has developed into a strong sense of leadership and respect amongst his peers. In class, CJ takes the time to teach, encourage, and spot advanced weight training techniques with his peers. His effort and dedication builds positive culture in our class and helps enhance understanding for all students who surround him. CJ sets the standard for his classmates and is a perfect example of what a physical education student should be: motivated, collaborative, and driven. After graduating from Redwood, CJ plans to attend Fresno State, majoring in kinesiology with the goal of becoming either a physical therapist or a physical education teacher. I'm very proud and honored to present to you CJ Shin. Our next student is Taylor Rossen, who is Redwood High School's Science Department's outstanding student. Taylor is supported tonight by his parents, Sarah and Taylor Rossen. Taylor was nominated by science teachers, Mrs. Kason and Mr. Woodbury, and selected by the entire Science Department. Taylor has excelled in his AP courses in biology, chemistry, and physics because of his intellect and inquisitive nature. He asks compelling questions that demonstrate his understanding of the concepts and is able to apply those concepts to the real world. Taylor has also excelled in his other academic classes, as he has taken numerous honors and AP courses throughout high school, and he is currently ranked 14th in his class of 550 students and has a 4.35 weighted GPA. After graduating from Redwood, Taylor plans to go on a mission for two years and then attend BYU, majoring in biology or neuroscience. After completing his undergraduate studies, Taylor hopes to attend medical school, and we're sure he will. I'm very proud and honored to present to you Taylor Rossen. Our next student to be recognized is Mackenzie Branch, who is Redwood High School's Spring USAV Female Outstanding Student. Mackenzie is supported tonight by her parents, Samantha and Nick Branch. Mackenzie was selected by ASB teacher, Mrs. Aston, who wrote the following. Kenzie, as she calls her, is part of Redwood's ASB where she offers great ideas and a kind spirit. Kenzie can be quiet but is passionate and not to be underestimated. She is a hard worker and is always looking for ways to better our campus. Kenzie is the rally commissioner. She has been tasked with planning and executing whole-school rallies without a gym this year, out in the stadium, so she's done a great job. This is a very difficult job every year, but like I said, this year has been extra difficult. She is the first rally commissioner to ever put on outdoor rallies, multiple that is, taking what we normally do in the gym and making it exciting and interesting outside, and that's no easy task. She works hard and puts on great events. She handles her ASB responsibilities and school work with ease. She has a deep love for Redwood and exemplifies what it means to be a true Ranger. I'm very proud and honored to present to you Mackenzie Branch. Our next student is Bryson Alvarez, who is Redwood's Spring USAV Outstanding Male Student. Bryson is supported tonight by his parents, Christina and Emilio Alvarez. Bryson was selected but also by our ASB teacher, Mrs. Aston, who had this to say about him. Bryson is the type of leader that leads by example rather than words. He is honest and does what is right even when no one is watching. He completes his responsibilities without being asked and helps others to ensure the job gets done right. Countless times Bryson has picked up the slack of others and doesn't ask for praise or recognition. He simply comes in and helps and leaves quietly once he is done. Bryson is a great example of a Redwood Ranger. He's kind, helpful, and has a great sense of humor. He is fun and friendly, and oftentimes you can find him laughing with his classmates. Bryson loves Redwood and is a great example for our other Redwood students. I'm very proud and honored to present to you Bryson Alvarez. And I have one student who could not make it tonight because she has a COS concurrent enrollment class, but I have this to say about her. Lane Roper is Redwood High School Math Department's outstanding student. Lane was nominated by math teachers, Mrs. Blair, as well as the entire math department, who had this to say about her. Lane Roper is an outstanding math student. She has over 100% in my AP Stats class. Lane puts 110% effort and goes out of her way to help students around her. She wants to see others succeed as well. She has gotten 100% on every test we've taken so far this year and has done every homework assignment. She makes my class look easy, and it's not. Lane participates in every class activity and guides the discussion with her peers to help them understand the material. She doesn't just give them the answers, but explains the parts of other students to other students that need to understand the concept. In all my years of teaching AP Statistics, Lane has to be my highest achiever of all time. Lane has also excelled in her other academic classes as she's taken numerous honors, AP, and college courses during high school, and she is currently ranked ninth in her class of 550 students and has a 4.39 weighted GPA. After graduating from Redwood, Lane told me she will be attending Harvard University and majoring in environmental engineering. I'm very proud and honored to present to you Lane Roper.
Nicely done Rangers. If you could step offstage to my left, please. Round of applause for Redwood High School students. Great, great job. Up next, please help me welcome Principal Nelson for El Diamante High School.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero, Interim Superintendent Cardoza, Board members, students, parents, families, and community members. My name is Kim Nelson, and I'm the proud principal of El Diamante High School. It is both an honor and a pleasure this evening to present outstanding El Diamante students with Board Recognition Awards. Students, when I call your name, please step forward. Jasmine Marcelino. Jasmine is the recipient of the Language Development and Growth Award. She is the daughter of Angelica Sanchez. Ms. Daphne Melgar recommended Jasmine for this award. Jasmine has demonstrated characteristics of responsibility and perseverance in her classes, which has led her to her social and academic growth. Jasmine asked questions in her ELD class and helped her classmates as well. One attribute that Ms. Melgar admires about Jasmine is that she takes responsibility for her own actions. For example, when she was not satisfied with a grade in one of her classes, she wisely used her time in her ELD class to improve her grade. Ms. Melgar is certain that Jasmine will accomplish any goal that she sets her mind to because she is a dedicated and courageous young lady. I'm very proud to present Jasmine Marcelino. Vanessa Rodriguez. The math award goes to Vanessa Rodriguez. She was nominated by Mr. Brad, her math teacher. According to Mr. Brad, Mr. Brad Robb, Vanessa is an exceptionally smart and determined young lady who rarely makes a mistake in her AP Calculus class. Because of these amazing qualities, she currently has the highest grade in her class. This is not an easy task since there are many bright students in AP Calculus. Vanessa has a college-weighted GPA of a 4.45, and she has taken multiple AP classes. The math department at El Diamante will miss Vanessa Rodriguez as she moves on to UC Santa Barbara. Go Gauchos! And next year, she will know, we know that she's going to do fabulous in college in whatever she does. Congratulations, Vanessa. Avery Contreras. Avery is the recipient of the PE award. Avery is here this evening with her parents, Alan and Kelly Contreras. Over the past four years, Avery has made great efforts in gaining strength in the weight room and focusing on her studies as a strong academy student. Avery makes it a point to come to class prepared each day and to maintain self-motivation and discipline in order to complete her lifts with great effort. She took the record for girls' squats this year for having the highest girls' squat weight in El Diamante history. The record was set 10 years ago and has not been broken since. Avery currently holds the record as a squat of 255 pounds. You go, Avery. In addition, Avery has stayed on top of her training during the period of time that we're on distance learning due to COVID. She never complains about working out and always has a positive attitude towards learning and growing. And as you see, she plays softball for El Diamante, and we won tonight, eight to zero against Lamar. Have to say that. Congratulations, Avery. Please step forward, Nathan Tarabi. Nathan is the recipient of the Science Award, and he is here this evening with his parents, Camron and Sarah Tarabi. Nathan has succeeded in all of the AP Science classes that EDHS has to offer: AP Bio, AP Chem, and AP Environmental Science. He is an active participant in class with a great sense of humor and a genuine willingness to help others succeed. His ability to focus on the task and accomplish it to set the standard of achievement for his other peers, so he sets the bar in his class. He knows how to get a group project started, but also knows how to step back and let others take the lead. He has a deep interest in and a talent for science, math, and scientific inquiry, and combined with his positive demeanor, great work ethic, and passion for learning, makes him a very extraordinary and capable student. He will be attending Syracuse University this fall as a Cornet Scholar, which is a highly competitive award. I am proud to present to you Nathan Tarabi. Vanessa Real. Vanessa is El Diamante Spring USAV Student of the Season. She is here tonight with her parents, Jamie and Selena Alvarez. Vanessa was nominated by Mrs. McBride and EDHS ASB. Vanessa deserves to be recognized for her outstanding contributions to El Diamante and her community. Vanessa is an exceptional young woman. She's an all-around student with a variety of interests. She is in student government, AP courses, and cheerleading. Vanessa is involved in several clubs and serves as the ASB Rally Commissioner. This is a very challenging position in normal times, but circumstances placed obstacles in the way of producing the traditional rally and assembly. Vanessa was up for this challenge. She was able to lead her committee to produce all of the rallies we would have in a normal year, plus some extra events. Vanessa is also a member of the varsity and competitive cheer teams. Her work ethic is exemplary. She participates in ASB cheer clubs, her AP classes, and maintained a 3.0 GPA. After graduation, Vanessa plans to attend California State University Fresno, where she will study business. Her career plans include obtaining a real estate license and becoming a broker. I have no doubt that she will succeed in achieving this goal, given her skills, talents, and determination to succeed in whatever she does. I'm very proud and honored to present to you Vanessa Realial. Preston Boswell. Preston is EDHS's Spring USAV Student of the Season. Preston is here tonight with his mom, Shannon Boswell, and his grandparents. Preston was nominated by Mrs. McBride and EDHS ASB. Preston Boswell deserves to be recognized for his outstanding academic and servant leadership contributions to El Diamante. Preston has managed to achieve a 4.47 GPA while maintaining a rigorous academic, extracurricular schedule, including AP and college courses. Student government, clubs, varsity basketball, he's involved in lots of activities at El Diamante. As a member of El Diamante Student Government, he has served the student body in an elected position all four years as freshman class president, sophomore class vice president, and junior class president. As a senior, Preston sought the position of ASB president with the goal of expanding events and clubs on campus. He has achieved his goal there and many new clubs, while having many new clubs on our campus, including the President's Council, which is comprised of representatives from all ASB clubs on campus to ensure they have a voice in the student government at EDHS. Preston has truly learned what all leaders know, that service is integral in leadership. He has demonstrated this through his continued willingness to participate in service projects, clubs, and community groups. His various projects are Kids Day, PTS Holiday Care Packages, Kindness Week, and Pennies for Patients. He is a member of the FBLA, CSF Club, Green Club, Medical Club, and Link Crew. In the community, he has participated in the Miracle League, Paint It Forward for Veterans, Visalia Unified School Board Student Representative, and Visalia Neighborhood Church in the Serve Visalia Program. I am very proud and honored to present to you Preston Boswell. Unfortunately, our last recipient, Isaiah Munoz, was unable to be here tonight, so I'll just say just a few words about Isaiah. Isaiah is nominated by the Business Department at El Diamante High School. His emphasis is business in the food service industry. Isaiah has expressed interest in continuing his education in the food industry. He's considering many aspects of food service and looked into possible culinary school experience. He is a hard worker that gets along with his peers. Unfortunately, again, Isaiah couldn't be here, but we are proud that Isaiah Munoz has earned the Business Award. Ladies and gentlemen, El Diamante's outstanding students. Ladies and gentlemen, El Diamante's Outstanding Students.
Nicely done, minors. 4.4 GPAs. They can squat about 250 pounds. There's just super, super talented students all around. Round of applause. Students, if you could exit to my left, please. Thank you so much. Congratulations, minors. Nicely done. At this time, please help me welcome Mr. Robert Aguilar, Principal of Mount Whitney High School.
Good evening. Good evening, Interim Superintendent Cardoza, Board President Guerrero, Board members, parents, students, fellow educators, and community members. I'm Bob Aguilar, Principal of Mount Whitney High School. Wow, this is the good stuff. I like this. As a former Mount Whitney student, coach, teacher, assistant principal, and now principal, it is an honor to stand before you and introduce Mount Whitney's award winners for tonight. Before I start with our Business Education Award, on behalf of Mount Whitney, I wish to congratulate all the student award winners for their outstanding work at their respective high schools. Okay, Mount Whitney, when I introduce you, make sure you step forward and don't be shy and smile, please. Okay, let's start with our Business Education Award. That will be Starlin Lexan. Starlin's parent is Sarah Lexan, and she is nominated by Teacher Mrs. Perez, who I believe is here tonight. Star is an exceptional, well-rounded student. In the Business Department, she is enrolled in an Introduction to Video class. Within the class, she has mastered camera techniques, editing accuracy, and overall creative performance. She has an eye for storytelling through film. Her ability to piece together creative angles, cuts, and transitions, and being a strong leader within her groups has won her this award. Star carries a 4.0 in her academics, and she plans to attend COS and major in business. The Business Department is proud to acknowledge her. Great job, Starlin. Congratulations. Next up, we have Keelme Taiho is our Mount Whitney's Outstanding Language Development Growth Student. Keel's parents is Fang Ho, and she is nominated by Mrs. Renteria of our Language Development Department. Three years ago in 2018, Keelme entered the Newcomers Language Academy at Mount Whitney High School with a thirst to find opportunities. Never one to make excuses, she worked consistently through every adjustment, repeating words, asking questions, and meeting new friends, even on occasion, learning some Spanish from her classmates. Besides her kindness and perseverance, Keelme continues to shine at Mount Whitney by debuting her dance skills in the annual school dance show and earning straight A's in her last three semesters. Keelme's newfound confidence as a bilingual student has made her the perfect ambassador to other newcomers, and she'll be the first to share that she is happy, motivated, and eager to continue living her best life. Keelme is a role model for all ELD students and has made Mount Whitney teachers very proud. She will be attending COS studying in nursing. Mount Whitney congratulates Keelme as our Outstanding Language Development Growth Student. Congratulations. Next up, we have Mount Whitney's Mathematics Department honoring Giovanni Ramirez. Giovanni's parents are Juan and Rebecca Ramirez, and he has been nominated by Mrs. Clinchew in the Math Department. Giovanni Ramirez is a brilliant young man with a passion for knowledge and an understanding that makes him an absolute joy to have as a mathematics student. His intellectual capability helps him to grasp difficult concepts quickly and apply concepts to new problems. Giovanni pays special attention to detail and produces outstanding work. In addition to being a great math student, he's a kind young man who is willing to help his fellow students. His attitude and work ethic exemplify what Mount Whitney strives to cultivate. After high school, Giovanni will be attending UC Berkeley studying industrial engineering. It is a pleasure to recognize Giovanni Ramirez as Mount Whitney's High School's outstanding student in mathematics. Congratulations, and go Bears! So, in physical education, we have Valerie Vasquez Robles as our outstanding student. Valerie's parents are Maria Robles Guzman and Juan Velazquez, and she has been nominated by Mr. Yaki and the PE Department. For the past year, Valerie's in her weightlifting class has grown as an athlete as well as a young woman. Valerie is the definition of what we look for in a student-athlete. We communicate to all of our athletes that we want winners, and Valerie's a winner in multiple aspects. She wins on the mat by working hard with the team and puts in their extra work at home and after practice. Valerie wins by her willingness to ask questions on how she can improve, not only as a player, but as a leader. You never hear anything negative from her teachers about her work ethic in class, and she holds herself to a high standard and has a grade point average of 3.6. Valerie has proven that she has what it takes to win in life, hold herself accountable, not take the easy way out, and does what it takes to win each day. Valerie will attend COS with the intention of becoming a social worker. Awesome job, Valerie. Congratulations. Next up, we have Elsa Myers as our Science Outstanding Achievement Student. Elsa's parents are Robert and Melissa Myers, and she has been nominated by Teacher Mr. Klor and the Science Team. Elsa's a natural 4.0 at Mount Whitney. Her chemistry teacher, Dr. Carpenter noted, "I remember Elsa being consistently persistent and determined for academic excellence." She's a great, positive, and upbeat student. Mr. Hemphill, her honors biology called that, biology teacher recalled that, "Elsa was always a curious and engaged student. Her clever sense of humor, goofy wit, and good-natured personality, combined with a science desire to learn and excel, made her a pleasure to teach as well as an outstanding student." Her current AP Bio teacher, Mr. Klor adds, "Elsa has an inner drive to achieve. She shows enthusiasm for the task at hand and especially enjoys lab work." These attributes give her a wonderful foundation for her career as an athletic trainer she plans to pursue. Elsa is a three-year varsity soccer player, and as the oldest of five children, she's always liked to diagnose symptoms and apply bandages. So when she learned that a job called athletic trainer gets to do that, she said, "Gets taped and fixed stuff, and it's an actual job," she found her career. Elsa's been accepted to the Exercise Science Program at BYU Provo, and in her words, it says, "It's super cool to see hard work pay off. Just don't call it kinesiology." Elsa represents what is best about Mount Whitney. Congratulations, Elsa. Next up, we have our first USAV Spring Student of the Season, Mariah Vasquez Eskamia. Mariah's parents are Mallory Vasquez and Efren Eskamia. She's been nominated by our ASB teacher, Ms. Taylor, and the ASB team. Mariah is a senior at Mount Whitney, and she's caring, responsible, and hardworking, as stated by many of your teachers. Mariah decided to go out for tennis as a junior and has become an outstanding varsity tennis player for the past two seasons. She was a part of our Valley Title-winning women's tennis team in 2021. She also plays varsity soccer. Mariah never fails to set a high example to her peers and fellow student leaders in both Link Crew and ASB. Mariah has made a positive influence at Mount Whitney High School academically, athletically, and within student activities. After high school, Mariah will attend COS with plans of becoming a sonographer. Did I say that right? All right, cool. Way to go, Mariah. Congratulations. And our next USAV Spring Student of the Season is Mr. Michael Torres. Please stand forward. Michael's parents are Alina Guerra and Fenton Torres, and he's been nominated as well by ASB and Ms. Taylor. Michael is a senior at Mount Whitney High School. He has been a strong leader in all of the academics and athletic programs he's been a part of on campus. Michael's been a part of our varsity cheer program for three years and competed in our second-place CIF competition team this school year. He's been a part of Mount Whitney Dance Program for four years. Michael's an active leader in both ASB and Link Crew. His drive and motivation to accomplish successful events at Mount Whitney does not go unnoticed. Michael will study history at COS with the plan of becoming a museum director. We are very proud of Michael's accomplishments, and we wish him all the luck in the world. Congratulations, Michael. Thank you all for Mount Whitney's Super Students.
Another great group. You know, we have students in this group that learned English as a second language. From students that are going to UC Berkeley. Giovanni, love that hat. I already visualized you at UC Berkeley, always wearing your hat, always be you, my friend. To students attending BYU, to Valley champs. Round of applause for the Mount Whitney pioneers. Last but not least, please help me welcome Mr. Mike Lambert, Principal of Golden West High School.
Sorry, I'm a little bit taller. Good evening, Board President Guerrero, members of the board, Interim Superintendent Mr. Cardoza. My name is Michael Lambert, and I'm the proud principal at Golden West High School. Tonight, we'll be going, is the end part of the program, but generally, Trail Blazers are the ones that lead. So after our program's over and we take pictures, we'll lead everybody into the rest of their evening, this fine Tuesday evening. I'm here to talk to you about some outstanding Golden West Trail Blazers. We're going to start with the award winner for the Business Department, and that's Jose Garcia. Jose is an exemplary student in our Business Finance Academy program at Golden West, with a current GPA of 4.0 and a class rank in the top 10%. His dedication to learning and constant pursuit of academic excellence is remarkable. He's an exceptional communicator with outstanding attention to detail, which are integral skills that helped his virtual enterprise team to six top, or to six top finishes in business competitions this year. His enthusiasm has been a staple in our program and for his peers over the last four years. Jose's commitment to excellence and educational journey at Golden West was the epitome of our school-wide learner outcomes, and I'm honored to award him with the Outstanding Student Award for the Business Education. I'm excited to see what this young man will accomplish in the future. Once again, Jose Garcia. Our next student is the award winner for language growth, and that's Ryan Dos Reyes Fraga. Go ahead and step forward, Ryan. Ryan came to Golden West from Brazil two and a half years ago with no knowledge of the English language. In a short period of time, Ryan has become proficient in both English and Spanish. Ryan values his education and is thankful to be attending school here in the United States. He currently has a 3.8 GPA. He is responsible, respectful, and a good role model for the younger newcomers here at Golden West. In addition to stellar academics, Ryan has a job and is on the varsity tennis team. Congratulations, Ryan. Our next award winner is the award winner from the Mathematics Department, and that is Elliot Wiley. It is an honor to recommend Elliot for the Student Achievement Award in Mathematics. Elliot is academically well-rounded and excels in all of her studies. As a result, she is among the top students in the senior class ranking, fourth out of 401 seniors with a GPA of 4.26. Elliot is exceptionally gifted in the area of mathematics and is currently enrolled in AP Calculus. Even among this elite group of math students, Elliot stands out. She's an insightful and dedicated student. She asks questions and pushes herself to not just be able to do the work, but make sure she fully comprehends the concepts. As a result, she consistently earns the highest test scores in AP Calculus. While she's committed to academic excellence, her interests and talents go beyond the walls of the classroom. She tutors students in mathematics. She's won awards as an artist, volunteers at her church, trains in Jiu-Jitsu, and is passionate about helping young girls learn safe methods of self-defense. It's a pleasure having Elliot in class, and she's truly deserving of this award. Congratulations, Elliot. Our next award winner is in the PE Department, and that is Marielle Hurtado Oregon. Marielle is a four-year physical education student. After a rough start due to the COVID pandemic, Marielle has rebounded and become an outstanding PE student. He's respected by his peers for his dedication in the weight room, as well as his agility, speed, and cardiovascular fitness. Marielle is committed to the AOFR Academy, that's the Academy of First Responders at Golden West, and wants to be in future law enforcement. Not only does Marielle have his eyes on completing his education and fitness goals, he's also a member of the Visalia Police Department Explorer Program. Marielle is an outstanding example of hard work and dedication paying off. Once again, Marielle Hurtado Oregon. Our next student comes from the area in the Science Department, and that's Candace Esterman. The Science Department at Golden West has chosen to recognize Candace Esterman as our recipient for the outstanding work in science. Candace is nothing short of stellar. Her drive to succeed is unmatched. She is smart, resilient, and exceptionally motivated. Candace is a fierce competitor who never fails to go beyond what is expected of her. The science classes she has taken at Golden West include chemistry, AP Chemistry, physics, and AP Biology. She intends to be a major in forest and fire science at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. We have no doubt that Cadence will go on to become a highly influential individual in this field and that she'll make a huge difference in this world. Cadence Esterman. Our next student is the female USAV Student of the Season, Camriel Ortiz. When students like Camriel Ortiz come to our campuses, we are all better for it. With a sense of urgency few else possess, Camriel strives to do better herself and her classmates and her community with every action that she takes. As the inaugural president of the National Honor Society at Golden West, she started a clothing drive that brought in hundreds of articles of clothing to benefit the Salt and Light Community Shelter. As the inaugural Golden West Equity Commissioner, she helped found the student equity forums and served on the site cultural proficiency team. As an elite athlete, she's been on a winning volleyball, softball, and basketball teams. And as a student, she is consistently at the top of her class. Camriel's a fierce fighter against discrimination and bigotry and an advocate for mental and emotional health for her fellow youth. The accolades that Camriel has earned are all well-deserved, and she is a beacon of what is great to be about Golden West High School. Camriel Ortiz. Our final award winner is the male USAV Student of the Season, and that's Angel Ochoa. Amongst all the accolades I'm going to talk about, Angel was also my line leader tonight for all my seniors. So, great job there, Angel. Angel's the type of student that every teacher on campus dreams of having. He is consistently kind, both to his peers and to his teachers. He finds opportunities to say thank you and make sure his teachers feel like he values their work and energy. As a new member of the ASB class, he showed up every day ready to lead his peers by putting on new events and planning ways to include more students. On top of that, he always made sure his fellow leaders were able to get their work done. Angel would stay until dark, had covered, until dark, and until he'd covered the campus just to ensure that everything was finished and ready for the activity we have coming up. On top of all that, Angel is respectful and challenges himself. Angel tries new things. He puts himself on a path to learning so that he may best prepare himself for his future. Students like Angel are valuable for their commitment of positivity, desire to grow as leaders and learners, and for their ability to brighten the classroom. Angel truly embodies the spirit of the season of Golden West. Congratulations, Angel.
Another round of applause for the Trail Blazers. Amazing, amazing students, leaders, top 10 in their class. Amazing, amazing students, leaders, top 10 in their class, top competitors in academics, as well as other areas. Congratulations. Board President Guerrero and members of the board, this concludes our academic awards presentation. Thank you.
Yeah. As Board President, I wanted to congratulate all the students that received the awards tonight. And I also want to congratulate the parents and guardians of these children, of these students. Can you please stand? Can I have the parents and guardians stand? We'd like to see you. It's in the dark, but we can still see you a little bit. Thank you for sending your students to Visalia Unified. Good night. This meeting is adjourned.